Okay, our first questions will be directed towards our four candidates for Colleyville City Council, Mike Taylor and Bobby Lindemood Jr., both running for Place 6, and Elizabeth Zeitlin and Nancy Copeland, both running for Place 5. You'll each be given the same amount of time to answer the same questions. It's perfectly acceptable not to use all of your time, but we will cut you off if you go too long. We will take turns with who goes first with each question. My lovely assistant, Susan Peabody here, has got some little cards, so I don't want to have to do this at you, but I will, okay? All right, so Mike Taylor will start with you. If you come up to the mic, please. Okay, you have one minute to first introduce yourself and then answer this question. What is the one burning issue that has prompted you to run for reelection to Colleyville City Council?
Thank you, sir. And how long do we have to answer?
You have a minute to introduce yourself and a minute and a half to answer the question.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Mike Taylor, and I'm privileged to live in the great city of Colleyville. I am so proud of where I live, and I'm even more proud of the fact and humbled deeply that you've let me serve you for the last three terms, which is equal to nine years, and my time is up. Not literally how some of you probably think that, but that is not my seat. People like to say it's so and so. No, it's our seat. It's we, the people. And so my gig is up, May 9th, whenever you decide who your next person, who you will hire to fit in that seat is. And I'm asking to be that person because my one burning desire, after living here for 31 years and growing up in northeast Tarrant County, is that I want to see our economic development keep going. We have, I think we're on fire compared to Colleyville standards. We have done very well over the last decade, and it's not just any one person. It's been a team effort, and I'm privileged to be part of a team of seven people. I get one-seventh of the argument, one-seventh of the decision, or one-fourth, you might say. It only takes four votes to prove anything. But it is an exciting time to be a citizen in Colleyville, Texas. I want to brag as we go through the evening. I hope we ask about fiscal responsibility. I'm going to brag real hard on that one. I hope you ask about transparency. We'll brag on that, and anything else that comes up. But I consider myself deeply blessed. You've humbled my family. We have enjoyed being a part of. If you choose to go another direction, we're still going to be proud of our city. But I think I'm the best person to keep this progress going, and we're at a pivotal time in that success. And I will assure you that if you're happy with what's happened so far, I'm going to keep it going and be doing my part. Thank you.
Under time. Thank you. Bobby Lindemood, you have one minute to first introduce yourself and then a minute and a half to answer the same question. What is the one burning issue that's prompted you to run for Colleyville City Council?
Hi, everybody. My name's Bobby Lindemood. I live in Colleyville, on the great city of Jim Mitchell, on the great street of Jim Mitchell Trail. I'm just going to let you know that I'm not a polished politician. I'm just a regular guy, just like you. I've got a job. I own a business. I have a wonderful family. I have a wife that's of almost 21 years. It was my high school sweetheart. Raise your hand. I know I'm going to embarrass you. I have a 14-year-old that goes to CMS. Harper, raise your hand. I have a 10-year-old who is going, "No, Dad, not call, don't call me." That goes to OC Taylor. She's redder than the sun right now, I can tell you. I'm just the old boy that had nothing whenever I was growing up. My mom and dad, they split up unfortunately when I was young. My mom worked hard. She raised two boys. I was one of those guys. I had nothing. A lot of you guys, do you remember what unclaimed freight is? I lived off of Spam, salmon patties, government cheese, and milk. Powdered milk at that. How about that? Do you remember those days? My great-grandmother made my clothes until the high school, until she passed away. I'm a hard worker. That's what they taught me. They taught me that a handshake means something. They taught me that when you give a man his word, or a woman her word, you stand by I'm the guy that took $9,000 that I saved up with a high-interest credit card, and I prayed diligently. Worked on faith to build my business. Have you guys seen JR's demolition anywhere? You ever seen that glory to God underneath the bottom of it and up there at Whole Foods? I'm that guy. I'm that guy. I'm just like you. And I got up here because I felt like personal property rights were being violated. I got up off the couch, because there were so many people that wanted to get up off the couch, I did it. I got up and I said, "You know what? I'm going to try to make a difference." And so that's why I'm standing here today. I want to make a difference. I love my city. I love it wholeheartedly. If you've seen me, you've seen me out working things. You've seen me out getting my hands dirty. I have on the gloves. I have on the work boots. I'm in the work jeans. I'm not afraid to get out and get dirty with the citizens. So please, I'm just asking you, if you find it in your heart to vote for me, I promise you, I'll work hard for you.
Thank you very much. All right, Nancy Copeland, same question.
I think I have to lower this a little. No, I'm fine. I'll just bring it down this way. I'm Nancy Copeland, and I've been in the Colleyville community for 14 years and GCI Steve for 25. First, I need to give a shout out. My husband's here, Phil. Been married 28 years, and today I had my 14th grandchild was born at 12:38 a.m. So we raised our five children here, and we have three of them who live here and in the surrounding area. I've been involved, as you may know, I was on the school board for three terms, nine years, and we did a lot that you'll hear later on what we did, some great efficient models of governance. And I was asked, you know, he wants to know why I'm running. The main reason I'm running is that we have a great town. We have 98% satisfaction rate from our citizens for the quality of life. Colleyville's great. It's so good to see others here that are from Grapevine, and I do know many of you, but I've really enjoyed living in Colleyville. An interesting thing, because of that, I am one of principle. And if you don't understand that, and I didn't bring it up, but in my pocketbook is a constitution that I have had in my pocketbook since 1986. It is tattered and torn, and so my platform is family, flavor, and freedom. And I like it for family because family is the basic unit in life. That's why we have communities, so that we can raise our family, have a safe place that we have in Colleyville and go on. And flavor, we know the special essence of Colleyville, the community, and how those within it volunteer. And freedom, the basic principle of government, simple, is to provide infrastructure and water and safety so that the individual may have the liberty to pursue their endeavors and to have a good family life. Thank you.
And finally, Elizabeth Zeitlin. Am I saying that right?
Elizabeth Zeitlin.
Elizabeth Zeitlin, sorry.
I'll say it out loud for everybody. Elizabeth Zeitlin.
Would you like me to answer, repeat the question?
No, I think I have the question, and please forgive me that I've got notes with me because I have a hard time with public speaking. My name is Elizabeth Zeitlin. I have lived in Colleyville for eight years. My husband and I first fell in love with Colleyville about 12 years ago when we moved to Tarrant County, but we couldn't afford to buy something in Colleyville at that point, so we moved to Keller. We scrimped and saved until we were able to buy ourselves a lot on Glade Road and build our dream house and move into it. Of course, our life comes with choices. We chose that I was going to stay home with our two kids, Taylor, who is a junior at Colleyville Heritage High School, and my son Brendan, who is a seventh grader at the Claridan School in Southlake. My husband, John, is not here tonight because he works full-time during the week in Salt Lake City. That's a choice that we had to make so that our family could stay here in Colleyville. We love Colleyville. We've been so proud to be part of this community, and I'm so grateful to this community for everything that you've done for me. You guys can hear me okay, right? I heard you. Okay. Sometimes I'm not that loud. The reason that I am running for city council is because initially I got involved with the Glade Road project. I was concerned when I saw that our city council was going to do a redevelopment project that included 10-foot sidewalks that were going to cause many, many homeowners up and down Glade Road to lose part of their property due to eminent domain or forced property sales. I thought that that was something that should not be done, and it turned out that there were a lot of people who felt that same way. We tried to work with city council. We tried to negotiate on that. About 1,000 of us signed a petition saying that that was not something that we supported. Unfortunately, we were not able to get a compromise with city council, so that is why the petition was turned in, and that's going to be on the ballot on May 9th. Now, many of you may think that that's the burning question that is causing me to run for city council today. It's actually not. The thing that is causing me to run is after that petition happened, so many people came up to me and said, "We need help. We've got issues. We have issues with Highway 26 and the redevelopment there. We've got issues with the pipeline going into our backyard. Help us. You did this. You were able to talk to council, try and make some sense. Please help us." And they were craving leadership, and they were asking for their help, asking for our help with that. So that's one thing that you can get from me, integrity, transparency, inclusiveness. I'm here to help the citizens of Colleyville, help them work with our city government so that we can all have a city that we're proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. In case I missed it earlier, I'd like to point out that the two gentlemen, Mike Taylor and Bobby Lindemood Jr., are both running for Place 6, and Elizabeth Zeitlin and Nancy Copeland are both running for Place 5, okay? So the guy's against each other and the girl's against each other, right? All right, question two. This time, we'll start with Bobby Lindemood, and you'll have a minute and a half to answer these questions. Quickly, name your top three priorities for Colleyville and how you plan to implement them, including any programs you would cut or expand.
Okay, I'm like Liz. I'm a little nervous right now because I'm not a public speaker, so I'm going to use my cards also as well, but I could tell you that the first thing is public safety. We need public safety. The second thing is infrastructure, and transparency will be number three. Let me tell you, on public safety, I have a father-in-law who served on the fire department for 32 years. That man's a great man, and I believe in our first responders. Our first responders right now are asking the city council to please give them more money to help out in what's happening now. They are short-staffed. We're watching people at night go with just four officers throughout the city. Four officers. Yeah, we have a great town, but even Chief Holder said, "Hey, look, enough's enough. We need some help." And I want to find the ways that we can cut the pork to find more money for officers. I don't want to have to go through a special tax. That's what we're doing now. We're going with the special tax to help those guys out, and I don't want to do that. Infrastructure. We are trying to spend eight to 10 million, or eight to 10 years, $20 million, $18 to $20 million on one road. We have over a third of our streets that are substandard. We need to fix those streets as well as just one road. Let's get some fiscal responsibility in there. I am that guy. Transparency. I believe in the bill that Connie Burton has right now, SB 434. I think that everything should be open, and people are going to say, "Well, you know what? They're going to know what we're doing in Grapevine, and they're going to know what we're doing in Colleyville." But you know what? We get to know what they're doing as well. There's nothing that'll be held. Thank you.
All right, same question for Mike Taylor.
Top three issues, is that correct?
Top three priorities for Colleyville. How do you plan to implement them and any programs you'd cut or expand?
Well, I would ditto, and first, you have to learn how to pay for all of that stuff. So I'm going to focus again on economic development because that takes some tax relief off the property owners. More sales tax that we get in, the better off it is to balance that budget and let users from outside our city help pay for our city. Number two is on the fiscal responsibility, is that I didn't know whenever I went into this position that was created in 2006 through a charter revision, that I would be facing, and the council, I say "we" would be facing, the second worst financial crisis in American history within 18 months. We went into that with less than AAA rating on our credit, and we came out of it, we're still in the longest recovery in American history, and we're at AAA when we came out. That's because we applied the fiscal discipline. That's because every department asked for more money. That's their nature, and we were able to show them, "No, you don't need that. You've got to prove up everything you asked for." They will always tell us we need more. The fact is, we challenge them on it, and they get what we need to keep our costs down, keep our staff down. When we hire somebody, we don't like to fire them. So our full-time equivalents are very important. And then last, the transparency is something we have had video recordings. You can sit at home in your DVDs every night and watch your council meetings. You can watch them from 2006 on, anytime you want to go on the web and watch them. We don't care. That's there for you. That is total and complete transparency.
Thank you very much. Okay, and then again, for Place 5, Elizabeth Zeitlin, let's have you first. Quickly, name your three priorities for Colleyville, how you plan to implement them, including any programs you would cut or expand. You have one and a half minutes.
Okay. First, I'd like to talk about our infrastructure. Colleyville currently has 23 substandard roads, and they're anticipating that it would cost $650 million to take care of these roads. I think that our roads need to be a priority, not just Glade Road with the $20 million project that's currently on the books, but all of our roads, and we need to find a way to take care of them so that they're safer, and we're not in a situation like this in the future where we have so many roads that are in trouble. Second, I have been lucky enough the last few months to be participating in Colleyville Citizen Police Academy, and I'm so very supportive of our police department. I think that they do a wonderful job with the budget that they have, and I would like to see if we can find ways to support them more. I think that they've done a terrific job of keeping us safe, and I would like to make sure that we continue doing that in the future. The third thing I'd like to talk about is the bill that is currently before the Texas Senate to increase transparency for our economic development. We in Colleyville are so lucky to have so many CEOs and so many innovative business leaders in our community, and I would like to see us leverage those people so that we can increase the businesses in Colleyville and protect the businesses that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nancy Copeland. Again, three priorities for Colleyville. How do you plan to implement them? Any programs you'd cut or expand?
Well, the three items that I would be interested in, I don't think changing, but to assure, and one of them is the home charter rule. I firmly believe that we have to have local control and to continue that to make sure that there aren't any state mandates or federal mandates that we can stay away from. As a former school board member, and there's many here, they knew I was quite vigilant on that. I want to keep Colleyville locally controlled. That's very important. The other two is I also am interested in possibly switching. I know it's a lot of work, but when I was on the school board, we instituted zero-based budgeting. It takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of time, but because of that, we were able to give back from the bond issue. We had $14.7 million of that taxpayer money. Now, we don't have that in Colleyville, but having zero-based budgeting is really effective to control and keep it efficient. And of course, I look forward to being on the council with the other members to complete Highway 26. I think that will be wonderful for the community and for businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next question actually has three questions, so listen carefully. And we're going to give you two minutes, okay? All right. This time, we'll start with the Place 5 candidates, and so Nancy Copeland, it's your turn to go first. All right. Glade Road redevelopment has been a controversial topic and a process for close to two years now, and it's still unresolved. What is your specific position on how Glade Road should be redeveloped? Do you support the use of eminent domain to build sidewalks and trails? What is an acceptable use of eminent domain?
Well, the only reason for eminent domain is for transportation and for buildings that are falling apart. I don't believe in any other method for using that. Glade Road has been a commercial road since 1900. It was first started because it was the route for the cotton farmers on the other side of 121 to get to the train stop there by the Webb House. And because of that, there were many businesses on Glade Road after the early 1900s. Right now, Glade Road is a major artery into the city of Colleyville, and we only have three. Glade Road, at this present time, the resolution that is on the ballot is very vague. It's very vague, and I don't understand how you would implement anything. And if it passes, the only action that can be taken is the resurfacing of the road. So I am for the resolution to not be passed. I believe that from all the people, even the people surrounding Glade Road, and I live right off of Glade Road, are for two lanes and possible turn sections where it's possible. I don't know if there was another part of that. Sorry?
Do you support the use of eminent for sidewalks and trails?
Well, the only thing is, as a mom, I don't consider having to have a big trail, but I would really, if I was a mom, and I heard this from people in Cranbrook and other subdivisions, they want a walkway so that they can get to Bransford Elementary and so that I can get there and walk. I can't even walk, and I ride right down there. So I want a walkway. I'm not determining on one side, we have to have a walkway the entire way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same question for Elizabeth Zeitlin. What is your specific position on how Glade Road should be redeveloped? Do you support the use of eminent domain to build sidewalks and trails? And what is an acceptable use of eminent domain?
Okay. I think that the only acceptable uses for eminent domain are for safety or transportation issues. I do not support the use of eminent domain for sidewalks or beautification projects. An important question to ask yourselves is, why are we still here? Why are we still having this conversation about Glade Road? This is something that a petition was written and signed by over 1,000 Colleyville residents. And may I remind you, 1,000 Colleyville residents is 50% of the number of people who voted in last year's municipal election. So this was something that was important to Colleyville residents. 1,000 people signed a petition saying that they did not support the sidewalks, the 10-foot trails on Glade Road. Those of us who are working with the Protect Glade Road Committee tried to compromise with city council many, many times, both during public sessions, during private meetings, and one-on-one meetings, and we were never able to get city council to come to a compromise. We were told that when we gave them 75% of the road to have the 10-foot sidewalk, which is something that we didn't want to do because 1,000 people didn't want us to do it, but we were willing to try and compromise and work this thing through, they said we weren't compromising enough. So at that point, the petition was turned in. When the petition was turned in, the work on Glade Road was stopped, and this is something that is deeply troubling to all of us. Not one person on the Protect Glade Road Committee did not want the intersection improvements. We wanted the shaving down of Blue Bonnet, the roundabouts at Riverwalk and Bransford. We wanted most of the turn lanes. There were one or two that we wanted compromises on, and city council was working toward that. It was the 10-foot trail that was the issue, and that was the thing that was the sticking point. I'm a big fan of you put your money where your mouth is, and this city council said that that 10-foot trail was more important than getting this road worked on. That's why we're still here talking about this today. Thank you.
On to Place 6, candidates, and Mike Taylor. I'll repeat the question. What is your specific position on how Glade Road should be redeveloped? Do you support the use of eminent domain to build sidewalks and trails? And what is an acceptable use of eminent domain?
Very good question. The Glade Road project was one of the few projects that we've done a long time. It was all started by citizen input. The council stood down and let the consultants work with the citizens, got their input. He brought back three suggestions, and that's where it kind of ended for us because it was then taken over by a citizen movement, which is valid under our charter, under Section 603. It's called a referendum. And there's a legal technicality to the fact that once the petition was filed, even though it was 1,000 signatures, to be valid, you've got to realize it's 1,000 out of 19,000-plus registered people that can vote on that issue. So it's not like it is a mandate right there. I think it's fair to let the citizens vote on it, and they should vote on it. Anytime it's that type of controversy, we just can't work through it, then let's let the citizens vote. As to the trails, no eminent domain is not for trails. We have had a standing policy with our staff that as we get into final planning, they have the ability to vary the width to preserve trees, or there may be some immovable landmarks that cannot be negotiated. So the ideal is to provide a corridor where you do have pedestrian activity and get back to that trail width that's been there. And that trail pan was designed by citizens. That was not designed by councils. And every time we've sent it back, it's come back pretty much the same. So citizens seem to keep affirming that. And then the last thing is, is that on the eminent domain, roads, when you're dealing with, and I grew up here since 1955, you have to deal with, we still have meets and bounds. We haven't even planted a lot of the properties in the city. And when you deal with that, folks, you're having to square up odds and ends, and that's a legitimate use as your roadways. And that, other than that, the absolute, when citizens say, "We've got damaged property. Landowners won't take care of it. We've got drug issues. We've got criminal elements." Those are valid uses to remove buildings, but not to take the property. That's between the courts and the landlord.
Thank you very much. And last, we have Bobby Lindemood. I'll repeat the question. What is your specific position on how Glade Road should be redeveloped? Do you support the use of eminent domain to build sidewalks and trails? And what is an acceptable use of eminent domain?
The acceptable use would be for drug houses and abandoned properties. But let me ask you, who here would want their property taken for a sidewalk or a trail? That's what I thought. I don't want it taken. I am an impacted citizen. That's why I got off of the chair. That was one of the reasons, one of the many reasons. We tried to negotiate with the city. We didn't want to turn in the petition. We spent hours and hours negotiating. As we've said, we've been this far apart, and we, as citizens, moved to the city, but we couldn't get them to come off of the 10-foot trail or anything else. We were the ones that said it was okay to go ahead and do Blue Bonnet and Riverwalk, and let's go down to Bransford. But because they kept going into the meat of Glade Road where Judy Chapel's house is only 50 foot off of the road. See, it used to be a commercial trail or road, but now the city has turned it into a residential road. They've allowed people to build their houses on the road, right on the road. And now we're saying, "Hey, look, we're going to cut part of your parking, part of your driveway out because we believe that we need to fill in your ditch, and we need a trail." 10-foot trail. 10-foot is as wide as, it's bigger than this platform right here. Do you feel that's fair? I don't. I don't believe in eight years, eight to 10 years construction. I don't believe in $21 million on one road. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, there's so many other things we could do, and there's so many trees we need to save. And they say, "Well, we can take those trees down. We can plant new ones back." You show me where you can put a 50-year-old tree back. I'll call you a saint, but I don't think you're going to be able to do it. My friend here is all about intimate domain. He's the one who tried to pass the North Tarrant roadway right through, off a precinct line. He was the one of the guys. I'm not. I'm going to go out and I'm going to fight for your rights. That's why I'm up here. And I appreciate it if you'll vote for the petition because there's so many things we can do. Don't let them lie to you. Don't let them call us bullies and hijackers and special interests because we're not.
Elizabeth, you want to step up? Okay, I have to read a little bit. The question's actually pretty short, but I have to read a little bit to you here. And we'll give you a minute and a half to answer this. All right. Elizabeth, text rail is an ongoing topic in Colleyville. State representatives, the Tarrant County Grand Old Party, the Republicans, the Republican Assembly, and many activist grassroots groups across the country have, sorry, across the county, have realized that text rail is a giant boondoggle, and we are working together to stop it. The projected ridership numbers are so low that text rail will not achieve its stated purpose of relieving traffic congestion even in 20 years, and it will have no positive impact on the environment according to the government's own studies. The startup cost alone is nearly a billion of our tax dollars. Voters spoke clearly during the last election, and they voted on the transportation proposition that they want real traffic solutions in the form of roads, not rail. Here's the question.
Okay. I was going to say, you just answered the question for me, so I'm not.
As a council city person, will you speak out against text rail or only attempt to mitigate the damages?
Oh, I will definitely speak out against text rail. I believe that it is not good for Colleyville, not for our property values, nor our air quality, nor will it alleviate any of our traffic issues. As a matter of fact, I believe that it will increase our traffic issues. As a city councilperson, I will work with our council to repeal R-09-3065 so that we can remove our support from the text rail project and extend a moratorium on the future construction of a train station in Colleyville. I will raise my voice in support of stopping text rail in the hopes that Colleyville can put a stop to it, and then we can join with many, many different state leaders who are against it, including Greg Abbott, Connie Burton, Giovanni Capriglioni, whose name I can never pronounce, and Jonathan Strickland. I am in full support of transportation funding for roads, not rail. Thank you.
You could just call him Gio. We all know who you're talking about, Gio. Just Gio. Nancy Coblen, same question.
I'm always going to say his name because his last name, I have a hard.
There you go. All right. I'm not going to read the entire paragraph again.
That's okay.
Okay. Nancy Coblen, same question. Will you speak out against text rail or only attempt to mitigate the damages?
Well, text rail is an interesting issue, and as an individual, I am against public rail systems. They have never made money. They never will make money. But I want to tell you something interesting. I'm a very strong believer in the 10th Amendment. As a Texan, a Texan doesn't tell what an Oklahoman's going to do, and it doesn't tell what someone that's living in Arkansas is going to do. If you are a councilman in the city of Colleyville, we have no jurisdiction over the event that is happening in Fort Worth, North Richardson Hills, and Grapevine. I believe that citizens in groups such as PACs may go against what is happening, but as a city in itself, I will not expand litigation fees and lawyers from our very, you know, our minimal budget that's very, has to be very efficiently used. And that's what would happen if we went forward. Citizens should go against it. They can do what they want, but as a city, we don't have the power to tell Fort Worth or Grapevine how to spend their money. If they want to spend it that way, they will have the consequences. The monies are federal. Yes, they are. So we need to go to our state and national representatives if we would like to have stoppage on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And now our Play Six candidates will respond, starting with Bobby Lindemuth. Will you speak out against text rail or only attempt to mitigate the damages?
Absolutely, I'll speak out against text rail. Who here wants to, who here likes the Obama plan that's rolling right now, the finance? Not me either. He's the one who's supporting this right now. They'd need a billion dollars to roll this train through here. Matter of fact, they were $450 million short, and he only gave them 100 million. They still need 350. Listen, that's tax money. That's your money running that train. And I don't believe that it's right. 40 to 50 per day, commercial on the weekends, four to five supposedly per week, heavy diesel trains rolling through your town. It impacts residents. That's who I'm for. I'm not for the big businesses. I'm not for the train. I'm for the residents. My friend here is on the RTC. He helps make those decisions for the rail. I don't. I'm not going to. I'm going to stand with the residents and tell them, hey, look, I'm not going to do that. And I need, we need guys up there with courage. He is on record by saying, there's not nothing you can do, there's anything you can do about it. I will do something. And I might get shot down, but you know what? I'm that same guy that'll go out and I'll fight for you, and I'll make a, I'll make some type of impact. At least they'll know who I am. And I'm going to stand up for you. I'm not going to be run over, especially by a rail.
Thank you. And Mike Taylor, again, will you speak out against Obama rail, oh, excuse me, text rail? Or will you only attempt to mitigate the damages?
Well, I'm deeply handicapped in the fact that I'm the only one under oath to protect the citizens of Colleyville, so I'm not going to be misleading you. As I understand it, at this point in time, and you need to refer to textrail.com for your factual information as they update it, none of this is in our purview. We have opted, and I'm going to divide the question into two questions. One of them is, Colleyville participating with any type of rail stop or location, that is not going to happen. We cannot see in any way that it suits our citizens. We'd have to cannibalize part of our crime control district, part of our economic development control tax. We can't do it. You don't even have a place for it to fit that makes sense. So Colleyville is out, period. The problem is, we have to get three places permission to cross text rail or the Dart Rightaway, is it Pleasant Run, Bransford, and John McCain. They were here before the city was incorporated. And so the issue is, our neighbors to each end are paying to run it once it's built. The federal money will build it. The local tax money from sales taxes what will operate it. It is their right to do it. This city here voted 80% that they wanted that operation. North, we're the only one who will not be participating. So I'm not going to mislead you. I would rather prepare you for the worst, and me be wrong if you want to be happy, or him not prepare you, and he's wrong. Which one of us did you the biggest favor? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to try a lightning round, so you all got, you all either are or want to be politicians, and I know that yes or no questions, I just need a yes or no. Okay? We're not even going to time it. Okay? Taylor, why don't you all just like all stand up, and then you just like, just one at a time, you can just give me a yes or no. How about that?
Is this like quartet style or?
Sure. All right. City of Colleyville has been, do you guys mind if we just do 1234, 1234 for time sake? Okay. All right. The city of Colleyville has been manipulating the statistics on crime, saying that crime is down 17% when actually arrests are up 30%. Violent crimes have increased over 100%, and drunk driving arrests are up 78%. Here's the question, yes or no. Do you believe promoting the city with better crime rates is more important than public safety? I'll ask the question again. Do you believe promoting the city with better crime rates is more important than actual public safety? Just a yes or a no.
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 Everybody got that? No across the board.
Your question is subject to challenge, though.
Noted. All right. Number two, Colleyville residents faced an increase in water rates in 2013, and another increase is being discussed. However, water usage is down, and we all know that the water provider, the Tarrant Regional Water District, diverts a big chunk of its revenue to Fort Worth's Trinity River Vision Project, which has nothing to do with water, rather than using the revenue to offset the cost of water distribution. Do you agree, yes or no, that Colleyville should not increase water rates until the city steps up to challenge this practice, both legally and politically? And let me read it again. Do you agree that Colleyville should not increase water rates until the city steps up to challenge this practice, both legally and politically?
Yes.
Yes, yes in the middle?
No, and your question's subject to challenge.
Okay, and no?
No, it's subject to challenge because you don't have the votes.
Okay, so everybody got that?
Yep.
All right. This is an easy one. Do you support term limits for city council?
Yes.
Absolutely.
No.
No?
I'd say yes.
Three yeses and a no.
Yeah.
I'm already term limited. So I'm here.
Number four, do you support spending cap, property tax appraisal cap, and debt cap reforms currently being considered in the state legislature?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No on the end?
Only no.
No on the end, okay. No on the ends, yes in the center. Last question, yes or no. Do you support taking economic development discussions out of executive session and into public session?
No.
Yes, absolutely.
No, contracts are private.
Okay. No on the ends, yes in the center.
Yes.
Okay, if you'd each have a seat. As we close our questions for the Colleyville City Council candidates, we want to give each of you the opportunity to provide closing statements, and then we'll do just a handful of questions if we've got some important ones, okay? We're just going to give you a minute for this, just sort of quick. This is your elevator pitch wrap-up. You may respond to or expand upon anything covered in here tonight, or bring up anything new that you feel is relevant. You'll each have one minute. Mr. Taylor, be kind enough to go first.
Tell me again what you want.
As we close, we want to give each of you the opportunity to provide closing statements. You may respond to or expand upon any covered, anything covered here tonight, or bring up anything new that you feel is relevant.
Thank you very much. I want to first of all say thank you again for letting me serve as your council member. I wish I could go along with some of the stuff up here tonight, but the questions are loaded and they are not correct in their assumptions. That is not right. Number two, I need to introduce my wife at the back, and the reason she didn't want to be introduced is she didn't want to have to take all your Apple questions. She works as an expert at the Apple Store, and our daughter works as an upcoming expert in Atlanta, Georgia. So that's the reason, but I appreciate everyone. Being here tonight, it means a lot to all of us here, whether you've run for office or not. I think everybody ought to do it once. It is sometimes brutal, it is unforgiving, but folks, it is the best government in the world. Americans are known for trying every way possible. They will finally do the right thing after they've exhausted all of their options. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. For the record, I didn't write these questions, I'm just here reading them. Okay. All right. Bobby, closing statements, you'll have a minute. You may respond to or expand upon anything covered here tonight, or bring up anything that you feel is relevant, sir.
Okay. I don't feel like the questions are loaded because they're all tricky to me, the whole thing, because I'm just like you. I'm a regular old guy that's out there trying to just make a way. I'm trying to be a voice for the citizens. And listen, we're tired of the same old thing, same old taxes, same old hubbub that's out there in the city, all the fighting. We need to act as a team. It's been the city against us. Our leaders have forgotten that it's not the city that you work for, it's the citizens. And we've lost that. And we need to put it back on the city council. My opponent has something on his sign, I think it's kind of indicative of what's going on now. It says, experience matters during uncertain times. You've been here for almost 10 years. Why are we in uncertain times? We should be pressing forward. We should be working as a team. We should be doing things as a team. Hands and gloves and work boots, and let's roll on.
Thank you, sir. Great job with the time tonight, all, everybody, great job. Again, you may respond to, respond or expand to anything covered here tonight, or bring up anything that you feel is relevant.
Well, I just have to say, this is a great opportunity. I am actually humbled to be in the presence of so many good people who actually do all the work. They work hard. I see those who volunteer, those who are other elected officials. We live in a great community. Northeast Tarrant County is very, very good. But I also have to let you know, there's a famous line that I use all the time, and when I was in grad school recently at 57, there's a line that James Madison said in Federalist 51, "If men were angels, there'd be no need for government." We are not perfect, that we will never be perfect, but this form of government, to elect your representatives and to come to them is very important. It's also important that you have the facts. It's very important that we, as citizens, get involved. There's not many of you out there, you know that. It's a very low percentage. I'm grateful to have the opportunity, and I hope that you will vote for me for place five. I have served you. You know who I am, you know what I've done. I'm an open book. I have a lot of history, so you can find all out about it. I appreciate all your coming here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth, sorry. Again, you may respond or expand to anything covered here tonight, bring up anything that you feel is relevant.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody else, everybody so much for coming out tonight, and I appreciate all of you getting so involved with this debate and educating yourselves on what we're talking about in Colleyville. I'd like to remind you that when it comes to the issues, I have always been an open book. I support the Glade Road, the Glade Road petition. Thank you, thank you so much, which means that I do not support the 10-foot sidewalks. However, I do support the intersection improvements and the roadway improvements. I worked hard with the businesses on 26 so that we could make that a one-time six-lane project, not a two-time four-lane and then six-lane project, to support our businesses and encourage more businesses to come in. I do not support text rail because I do not think that it's good for Colleyville. All of these things can be found on my website and have been there since the moment I declared my candidacy, lizforcolleyville.com. I stand for the things that I believe in. If that's things that you support as well, then I hope that you will vote for me for place five. If those are not things that you believe in, I would love to talk to you about it because I believe that we should all have a chance to talk to each other and understand our positions. Thank you. I wasn't looking at you.
Questions from the audience? Okay, these ladies here? It's open mic, come on.
I've been in law enforcement almost my entire adult life, and I was a dare officer for 17 years. October 31st, my stepson died of a heroin overdose. And I had it impact my own daughter a long time ago, even though she was the dare officer's helper. I know how prevalent drugs are in Grapevine South Lake Colleyville. The more money there is available, the more likely they are able to afford drugs. And I'm wondering if there are any type of projects that have been considered to assist those people who have any considerations for using drugs, our young people as prevention programs, and helping anyone who has been to know how to turn their lives around. To me, that is a huge issue in this area because I personally know of four kids that have died of heroin in just the last four years. And that's just me, and I just think that's a lot. And when I was teaching dare, I knew that the drugs were the most prevalent in this area for certain types of drugs. So I just want to know, is there anything that y'all think is important enough that we do something here to help as a prevention and an aftermath?
Well, I could say, just as being on the school board for nine years, the dare program is in the schools, and the cities, both Grapevine and Colleyville, provide the officers for their. I don't know whatever present is also in the schools since I've been gone for a few years, but that is a good thing to ask, and I get very willing to find out information and help you out on that.
This is just sort of, we're just freeing it, so just go ahead. Don't take too long, please.
I promise I won't. All right. How long we got? No, I'm just kidding. I'm with you. I've lost family members due to drugs. It's a terrible thing. Watching friends with children that are in there suffering. I do prison ministry. You know what? 80% of the people that are in there is because of drugs. We need something. That goes back to what Chief Holder said. I need help. I need money. We can find it. I don't know everything inside the city, but I'll be the guy that digs in and finds it. We will find those things. I think in general fund, we can do that. We'll say, oh, well, now wait a minute, but we have an oil well that's giving us money off to the side that we can do those things with. That may be one option. I'll dig it in, I'll dig, because that hits personal. It's, hits home.
Thank you. Other candidates?
I think we are doing what we can with public dollars. There's a lot that falls on the private community, and I know it sounds a little bit cold, but we get criticized for even having officers in the school because that's taxpayer dollars, and that's really not a school, a city function. We think it's been beneficial. We think it opens the officers up, finding out about a lot of the drug activity, and they need to know not to fear the police. And it has worked very well. I've continued to support it, and I will continue to support it because I think it does have benefit, and I think it's a small part of our public tax dollars that's having a big benefit. It's to all the others, we're in an affluent area. Northeast Tarrant County is affluent by all measures. That's money, money chases, idle time, devil's playground.
Thank you.
And I just want to say quickly, I'm very sorry for your loss. I'm so sorry for your loss. I'm, I'm so sorry for your loss. I know that that's something that we covered in the Colleyville Citizen Police Academy a couple of weeks ago about the drug program and some rehabilitation programs that they have looked into. I can find out some more information on that and see if there's something that can be expanded or get you some more information on what they're doing about that. So I'm sorry for your loss.
Okay, just one more question. We've got to hurry along.
All right. This question is for Councilman Taylor. A few years ago, you went into Tarrant County Republican Party headquarters, opened sealed envelopes, got out the documents, altered precinct convention documents, and added your name, your wife's name, and several other persons to the delegate list for the senatorial convention.